Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We have all of our council members here in a quorum. Can you please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I'm going to open the public forum. At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on items not appearing on the agenda. Comments may not exceed five minutes. In accordance with state law, however, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The City Council may respond to statements made, or questions asked, or may request staff to report back at a future meeting on the matter. Would anyone care to address the Council on an item not on the agenda? Go ahead, sir. That's the weed abatement issue? That's on the agenda tonight?
No, but this was a specific.
That's actually what's on the agenda tonight, is to put some teeth into our weed abatement notices, so we can do something about it.
I was going to address it in council member comments, but because usually we have members of the public speak, but it's not a conversation. I think your property is in the county, and unfortunately, the county doesn't do enforcement. So I understand your frustration with the runaround. The fire district, the fire district is... I just assumed, I assumed it was Sutter Creek Fire District, because their territory doesn't align with the city limits, basically. Yeah. Unfortunately, another of the counties is actively enforcing, and you're right on this boundary with the city. So again, I understand the frustration, but that's what I found out.
Would anyone else care to address the Council on an item not on the agenda?
Hello? Okay. Byron Damianni, I was just looking at the minutes and a couple of things that were on the council meeting with the pre-screening for Gold Rush at the last meeting, and wanted to point out just a couple of questions I think that the Council is going to have to address at some point. I was struck by the fact that they're looking at 900 houses eventually. I realize that's not all in the first phase, but that's a pretty big build-out. And it does greatly exceed our current housing needs. So I think the Council needs to be able to explain to the citizens what the benefits are of having a project like that, why that's really in the city's best interest to build that many homes, because it's going to have a very significant impact on current city population. The other thing was, a number of people had mentioned various projects that had failed to complete their final phases, failed to complete other infrastructure that was going to happen with later phases. And this project looks like they want to build 150 homes, and after that's done, then start contributing to expanding wastewater facilities for the city. And to me, that seems to be backwards. I think you need to get as much infrastructure funding upfront as you possibly can. They want to build a park. You should be putting park fees in escrow at the beginning of this process. If they don't complete it, you can refund them. But if, for some reason, the project goes belly up after building all of the houses, now you have the money in escrow to complete the park if the builder isn't able to do that. And you need to take the same approach, I think, with looking at sewer and water. I mean, the nightmare would be, they use 150 hookups. They go walk away after they've built 150 homes, and now there's no sewer capacity and no way to generate any more sewer capacity, other than to come back to the rate payers and say, "We're going to raise your rates again." And this year, I've seen my water go up, my sewer go up, my garbage go up, and my insurance is going up. So those are just things for the... I realize it's very early in the process, but things I think the Council needs to consider going forward is to get as much money for infrastructure upfront, because later phases just seem to never happen. And we've seen that over and over, not just in Sutter Creek, it's county-wide. It's been project after project. Zinfandel up in Plymouth had the same issue with getting roads fixed in Plymouth, and they were never fixed, because they never built the next phase. So just for the Council's consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Byron. Anyone else?
Pete Jensen, Sutter Creek. I'd like to kind of address the same issue. With this new so-called project we're going to do, is what's the process? Where do we start? Where do we finish? And where's a map of the project? What's the timeline? How long is this going to take? When is the water treatment plant going to be built? We've just had a City Council mini-meetings a couple of months ago about the new tax. Our city manager there told us that it was going to be strictly for the water treatment plant. I sat here and listened to him. So did the rest of the room. Of course, when Proposition P came out, it was for other things, other than the water treatment plant. So when is this stuff going to be taken care of in the right way? And with some visibility, so we know what's going on. The guy who's going to do this, what's his record? Has he finished projects? How many projects has he not finished? These are all questions that need to be answered before this goes forward, I feel. And if not, we need to do what we did before. We need to do an initiative process. And that costs everybody a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address the Council on an item not on tonight's agenda? Takes us to the City Manager's report.
Yep, thank you. So just to, again, use a second to maybe address some of the public comments. So again, I know the gentleman left, but again, we're kind of in a weird situation, where it's in the county. County doesn't really do weed enforcement. And, you know, he said it's an issue. And, you know, we're going to be talking tonight about weed and nuisance abatement within the city limits. But when it goes outside the city, you know, it's not really our authority. And to the gentleman that spoke about the Gold Rush project, again, it was a preview. It means the project is not yet complete.
You mean the project application?
Project application is not complete, thank you, Jen. But, you know, being complete means there's a map and all this information, and that will all be made public. So I just wanted to make sure. The whole point of having the pre-screening was to have a public meeting and make it generally known that the project is being worked on by the developer, so that when it does come to public meetings, you know, the public can participate fully. So that's where we are there. I don't know if you guys noticed, I change my photos every month. This one seems particularly appropriate today. So, you know, just some quick updates on our priorities. And I guess the last point was, the Measure P measure cannot be used for wastewater. And I'm sorry if that was misunderstood. The wastewater fund is an enterprise fund. It can only be paid for by ratepayer rates. The Council would have to approve transferring general funds into the wastewater fund. But Measure P was really about road repair and other kinds of infrastructure, storm drains. So as part of Measure P, we have been putting together the Oversight Committee. We do have seven applicants now, and we're in the process of vetting those, so I think we're in good shape. Thank you for everybody that volunteered. On the budget, you know, we are...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is not a...
I'm sorry, I interpreted it.
Section, yeah.
For the roads, not for the...
Yeah, yeah, it's for the roads. That's fine. Yeah, well, again, we're continuing to work on our new software for finance and working on getting the payroll portion of that done. And again, the team's continuing to train. So I know you guys are probably tired of hearing these updates, but it is a big process and something we want to get right. A lot of activity in the wastewater front. These are some photos staff took tours of a couple of different plants in the area. The one on the bottom is at the Chicken Ranch. It's a package treatment plant. They had the luxury of putting it actually inside of a building, which we probably won't do. But it was beautiful, stainless steel. These packaged plants are pre-made, and the companies do them, iterate the design over and over. So I think it's pretty cost-effective. You get a lot of efficiencies. They're kind of like Lego blocks. There's still a lot of pieces of the plant that need to be wired up and go around kind of the package treatment process. But it's something that, you know, we're continuing to follow up, get more information on. The one on the top there is the City of Lathrop. And they went through a lot of things that we're going through. They used to do land application. They now dispose into a creek. They are much bigger than we are, growing very rapidly, so their plant is much larger. But the operator of the plant, and their head of Public Works, shared a lot of great information with us, and it was a very interesting tour. And all of these plants, you see that computer screen. You know, these modern plants, you can basically run them off an iPad, which is kind of interesting. Talking to some of the operators, they can, if they get an alert in the middle of the night, they can often fix it from home. Continuing on with the wastewater, we are talking to multiple firms, kind of giving them background on our situation. We're asking two firms to provide kind of a more detailed assessment upfront on their own nickel. And they are doing that, looking at our site, looking at our conditions.
Tom, how much more detail are they going to be providing?
I think it will actually, it will be information that will allow them to respond to requests for qualifications, I think, in much more detail. And again, all of this is towards figuring out if they're going to be in our budget or not, basically. Part of that is this next bullet point, too, where, you know, we've been working with the Water Board on some of the water balance issues, but we're going to start a discussion with them, just to tell them some of the background of what we've been working on. And we think that'll be viewed very positively, as they look at new permits for everybody in the county, essentially. And then tonight, or actually this week with ARSA, there's a, we're preparing to issue an RFP to fix the Henderson Reservoir, which, again, that's been delayed for multiple years because of excessive water in the reservoir, as well as not having the funds. But we, we're getting everything lined up, so that we'd be able to do it probably this August, when we get the water down. And then we're also preparing to issue an RFP for INI repairs. So Dan and I have both been spending a lot of time on the wastewater front the last couple of weeks. So that's our last meeting. On the economic development front, you know, we're continuing to have a discussion with ACTC about past improvements, and how that's going to impact a potential application for this 150 homes, Gold Rush. And then we still haven't heard whether we got awarded that grant for economic development. Apparently, they are finalizing that March 21st.
Will you be discussing or talking about, at the end of the packet, about the letter from that you sent to Mr. Gedney? And the response from the developer?
Detail.
Okay, just as it relates?
And if you have questions, this is a good point right now, if you have questions about it.
I did like to do it down.
I can just tell you that, again, we're trying to recreate history here. It looks like, starting in like 2007, 2008, work started on Bowers Avenue, Prosperous Drive realignment, with some planning and studies. There was property that needed to be acquired. And then the city had a Caltrans grant, and they went to ACTC. ACTC was paying impact fees to the city for the planning. The construction started. There was a lot of environmental work that was done. Construction started like 2010, and I think it was completed in 2013. And then somewhere around there, towards the end, the Gold Rush started to happen. And then ACTC annual reports started to say that this money was supposed to be repaid back. So we're having a conversation with ACTC. There's no loan documentation. There's no payment terms from the city to them.
Have we gotten a response back from ACTC regarding the letter that you sent to Mr.?
Well, that was for the board meeting. They talked about it, and we're having another discussion with them later this week. So, and again, a lot of this is pretty old history. None of us were there at the time, including John Gedney. So we're trying to figure out who I was what to whom, at this point. And then just a couple other updates. You know, there was a fire last Thursday night. It was contained pretty quickly. You know, we had pretty high winds. You know, it started on a stove, and the fire department knocked it down very quickly. Could have been, especially with those winds, could have been a much, much more dire situation. I'm happy to announce that we have hired a new city clerk, who's starting this Wednesday. Also hired a administrative project lead. And then we have tenured acceptance for an account clerk, part-time position. So that will leave us with one opening, which is still recruiting for a police officer. We're going to be down an officer starting next week. So there's the remaining four officers who are going to be doing four hours of overtime each to cover for that.
Is that a permanent leave? When you say we're going to be down one, is that a permanent?
Yeah, we had an officer who transferred to another agency, or accepted a role at another agency. And then the Public Works team has been doing a really good job of vegetation cleanup around town. Hope you guys have seen some of that, Sutter Hill Road, the bottom of Sutter Hill Road, as well as up at Eureka Mine. And then I've been talking to the Arts Council. We're going to have two concerts in Sutter Creek this summer, sponsored by them. I think they're going to have a total of 10, you know, all around the county. And I'm still truly stunned, if she's going to say it later, but the ACR Board, you know, approved funding for the Bryson bathroom out of impact fees. But this is the old fund, so it needs to go to the county supervisors before it's fully approved. And then the newer impact fees, the ACR Board can approve directly, so.
Let us know if any of us need to help with that, when it goes to the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's good for all of you guys to talk to them now, so. And then in terms of community events, behind the Solid Door, it's coming up next weekend. And then we have the Earth Day Race on April 19th, and then the Great Duck Race on the 26th. Maybe some of the ducks will do the Earth Day Race to get in shape. I'm not sure if that's planned. And then we have Trash Treasures on May 24th. And then in terms of your agendas, there were several changes. I talked to each of you that pulled the item off consent, so there will be an updated draft of the pool contract at your next meeting. We're also, that meeting is probably going to be mostly finance-oriented, and we will, should have the long-range financial forecast and budget updates. And then the, these RFPs that we've been talking about will be coming to you as well. And then I mentioned it before, but at this point, I'd like to cancel the May 5th meeting. Just put that on your calendars. Yep, that's it.
I have a question about one of the correspondence emails to the one from Robin Peters with regard to the grading. And he mentioned that the grading included in the slide presentation is mass grading. And his assertion is that that is not consistent with the GRRSP, which I sort of looked up, so I don't know what that exactly means. And for this portion of the specific plan, so I'm just wondering what your thought is on that.
I mean, that was one of the issues that we flagged at the pre-screening. So GRR is Gold Rush Ranch. But we talked about the grading and...
The SP is the specific plan.
Yeah, so the plan seems to be a little inconsistent, and that in that plan, the higher-density housing is in this area, you know, with homes close together. And then at the same time, it was a parts, portions of it, not the whole thing, were limited with restricted grading. And it seems hard to do both. So that's where we were talking about the tree plan and understanding which trees they were going to remove.
So the approval, the specific plan calls for the grading you just spoke of?
It calls for restricted grading, but it also calls for a lot of houses there. And I don't, I think the restricted grading also appears in other parts of the plan, where it makes a lot more sense on larger lots. So we just think there's a conflict in the plan, like you can't really do both at the same time. So we are flagging it as an issue, but there's really not a resolution.
And then the other question I had was with regard to the sign on the other side of town that will point to the shops out of town. Are we still doing that? Do you have a photo of that, or the...
Yeah, we do. Can show it to you sometime.
Can we? Okay, I'll catch up with you.
I think you guys saw it, but it was probably like a year ago.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
I had a quick question on the, on the INI, and I don't know if I should wait till Dan, if you're going to talk later about that. But there's, you mentioned that an RFP is coming up for a lot of the INI work. And I was wondering if that work, specifically where you're going to make the improvements, was informed by these meters that you put in recently? Or is this something that was informed by something else?
No, it is an item, right?
Is it an item yet, later on?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, it's on consent, so I don't know if we want to talk about it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
Yeah, so these are more of maintenance or sanitation or overflow issues that we've had for a long time. So this is kind of the hot topic, top topic items that we've had in our history. We're actually getting briefed on Wednesday from the results of the INI flow meters.
Yeah.
And then, once, we're figuring, once we have these done, then next year, we'll come back and start the full, the ones that are more targeted because of the flow meters.
Okay. But just through experience, then, you know these are issues that need to be solved now?
Yeah, a couple of them are because of, like, we've gone out there three times this year already. A couple of them are very hard to get to, and so it takes us extra hours to go out there and do the maintenance of them. And some of them, we just can't clean. We've done it so much that we're, we're down to like a pinhole size. And we know that that's just an accident waiting to happen, so we're trying to clear those out before we move on to the next step.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
On that same topic, someone had asked me at one point, were we sure that no one was pumping, like, a sump pump into the sewer system? Is there any way to know that, or to advise people not to do that?
The sump pumps usually go out into the street, so, but no, there is no way to know whether they're doing that or not. Hopefully, we'll figure out whether we have excessive flows in the basin. And then we'll be able to target that area, and then we can walk around and kind of see. The next step of the flow meters is, after you get the basins that are the highest level, then you go back out there with the flow meters, and then you can kind of target each main. So you can get very specific if you need to. You know, you wouldn't do that in, you know, up the hill. But in downtown, you might want to go to specific mains to figure out if that one's higher than the other ones. You'll be able to see relatively if one's higher than the other. And so that might be because of a sump pump. And then we'd have to investigate that individually.
Any other questions for Tom? Okay. Takes us to the approval of the minutes from March 3rd.
Oh, I have one slight correction I'd like...
Go for it.
It's on page 10 of the agenda. It's the third paragraph down. It says Al Beers. That's Beers, B-I-E-R-C. You got, you got that already?
I've corrected that one, thank you.
Any other corrections? Otherwise, I'll hear a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes as with the correction.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. On consent, we have the INI that came in another document to us. Dan just briefed us on it. Did we, so I'd hear a motion to approve the consent agenda, or?
Yeah, I'd move to approve if nobody else has any questions on the council.
I second.
Any discussion? Were you looking it up?
I know, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Administrative agenda, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the wastewater engineering agreement.
Yeah, so for a long time, I guess Gary Guio's been our wastewater engineer. He's, he's wanted to retire for some time. He's effectively been retired. So we were, we've been looking for a replacement. We've worked with hydrosciences. They've done our master plan. They know our system very well. And Dan and I talked about it, and we started working with them on the water board, water balance issues. And that project's gone very well. So we, we would like to have them come on to be our new wastewater engineer. Bill Slunter's the partner there. But he also has more junior staff, and he's been sensitive to costs and hours, and trying to put kind of the right person on the job. So again, they've been primarily doing ARSA work, but as we move forward with a wastewater treatment plan, we really want an engineer to be an advocate for the city and help, help us talk to these construction firms and design firms. So happy to answer any questions.
Well, it's nice to be able to have the availability of someone who knows us, who knows the ins and outs. Couple of questions I'd, the contract, is this a one-year contract that ends in June 26th?
It's kind of an ongoing, similar to what we do with WGA, but for wastewater.
Do we see a prediction of how many years this may, or is it magnazium?
I mean, it's kind of, it's an hourly-based contract. So even when we're not doing a construction project, we need a wastewater engineer. And we've, again, the hours just go way down.
So it's just a year by year, then?
Yeah.
So at the end of, it says until June 26th. So prior to that, then, we would discuss extending it for another year, or?
I think, I thought it renewed automatically. I need to double-check that.
We've brought back the WGA and...
Yeah, but not every year.
No, I don't think so. And I feel like it broke, too, but it's not annually.
Do we have an estimate about what it would cost on a annual basis?
So again, it will vary. So every year, we budget for professional services as part of wastewater, you know, section of the budget. And we will stay within that budget.
And their, and the emphasis of their work is two or three things within, or what is, what is the?
It's really complex, complex engineering involved with wastewater. So we, you know, we have operators, we have other people we work with for kind of day-to-day issues. Grant Reynolds is still working with us. We also use this other firm A Quality. But when it comes to larger engineering like this Henderson Dam repair, that's where we would use hydrosciences.
Good. Then my last question is, with the forecast of taking on extra engineers, would they be working alongside of our current public works, people that are already there, or how will that?
Do you want to talk about how you work with Gary?
Merge the personnel?
So they're more of our expert in like wastewater treatment design. And so they would be our advocate when we're designing the plant, so we'd use them a lot more for like heavy engineering, as I would call it. More planning review, more engineering specs, that kind of stuff. We don't do that every day-to-day stuff, so that's more of what, and we had actually talked to Grant about this, and he just doesn't have bandwidth to to help us out. So he would normally be the one that would help us out with some of this stuff, but he's just too swamped, and so he couldn't, he couldn't do it.
So the engineers that are coming on are not going to be replacing any of our public works staff
No.
that are currently
They're they're going to help us with our big projects.
They're replacing Gary Keough.
Yeah.
Who's been on our staff as a contractor.
I just
And yeah, I mean, we did talk to Grant about bringing them on. He supports it. He's not, he he said himself, he's not qualified to design a wastewater plant.
And wasn't, didn't Bill Slunter do the water balance analysis?
Individual.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he he worked on the individual one.
Which in the, in the future will be a great asset because of his knowledge of what the system is now. And how it operates.
Anybody else?
No, it looked, it looked really good. I mean, I'm I'm glad we were able to get those guys for the reasons Jim was talking about also in particular.
I just had one point, I guess, rather than a question. So since we're looking at a design build option, or you know, considering design build, I appreciated how you pointed out that these guys will be the city's advocate in that process, you know, analyzing what they're presenting to us. How will that be? Will that be different because of the design build process than what Gary has done for us in the past? I mean, is this going to be?
Well, Gary hasn't really, he hasn't really helped us out with the design before like that. Yeah, it's so big. So he's helped us out with like design of the Henderson underdrain, so we had a couple of meetings to transfer over that kind of knowledge. Yeah, it it'll be different because the project is just longer and bigger than anything we've done before. And that's what I would.
The public have any comments or questions on this item?
We would need a motion to approve the agreement.
I move that we agree to with the wastewater engineering agreement as presented.
Sarah, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, item B, the Mini Provis Park improvements, Dan?
So this is a project that we've been thinking about for a while. We talked about it, I think, last year at the the priorities meeting. Trying to make Mini Provis Park a little bit easier to navigate. And just change how the entrance kind of looks. Right now, the problems that we're having with the park is that all the DG up at the top, kind of right behind here, is sliding down. It's kind of due to erosion and stuff like that. We would, we we had talked about using pavers to put in there. When we started looking at pavers, the price was just triple the amount of what we thought it was going to be. So we've decided to go with like a stabilizer with the DG. It's very cheap. It's porous, so it'll let water go through. So we're just kind of bringing this design to show you guys what we're thinking. We're going to put a small concrete path down from the top to the to where the bathrooms are. Right now, when you walk out of the bathrooms and you try to go to the park, you walk into the fountain that doesn't work and the benches. So we're going to take all that out. We're going to put in a new fountain. The new fountain is going to have a bottle filling station, a dog bowl at the bottom. And it's just going to make an easier path of travel when you walk to the park. We'll end up adding a little bit of grass area to it, too. And this, this DG that we'll bring in, this decomposed granite we'll bring in, will have the stabilizer in it. So we're assuming that this, we know that this will stop the DG from sliding down the hill. We're also going to do this at the bottom of the the park as going into the creek kind of area.
I'm scrolling through your photos.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, so there's a little mock-up of what we think it's going to look like at the end of the of the, when it's all done. Very crude. Don't judge my art skills.
So will the decomposed granite, the DG, will that extend behind the bathrooms then on down to where that picnic area is? Right down there?
Yes, it will.
Dan, I thought it was interesting. I was talking to Tom about some of the potential financing we might be able to get for this, some of the funding. I thought, I wondered if you might say a few words about that.
Yeah, so we we got the Amador County Foundation has a $10,000 grant that we can apply for to help improve, I think it's mobility of adults and children outside. And so we will apply for this and hopefully get that for it. It's only open to nonprofits and cities, that kind of area. So we're pretty confident that we'll we'll get some money for that, which will be nice, because then I'll just offset some of the budget that we've already allocated.
Doesn't the rancheria have a Parks Grant that's one of their community cycle grants? I believe they do.
Maybe, yeah, I'm not sure about that.
I think that's worth looking into, yeah.
Yeah, we could definitely.
I know they have them.
Yeah.
And Tom, was there another one that?
So again, we
Recollecting or?
We're talking about potentially a larger working with a woman who raised money for disabled kids, but this is, that would be beyond this. This is a a small project to fix immediate problems. That, which again, it's kind of premature, but there would be like surfaces that wheelchairs could go on, and it would actually impact the playground itself.
Yeah, we're we're kind of hoping that would replace the chips out there, you know, make one of those rubberized surfaces. That's what we're, that's what we're hoping for. Those are very expensive.
I have a question on the specifics of the drinking fountain. What's it made out of? Is that like the actual one you're wanting or?
Yeah, that actually is the one.
What's it made out of?
Oh, I don't know. I'd have, I'd have to look at the manufacturer and see what they, what they made it out of.
It looks like it's some kind of plastic composite.
It it looks kind of like that, yeah.
Yeah, because I was thinking, because I think it's a great idea. I love the multiple and being able to fill your water bottle. But because it's so big, I think that we could maybe do better aesthetically. And also, plastic doesn't age very well. Well, just doing a rough search, there are some ones that are a little more artistically and prettier.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'll shoot some ideas.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we were just kind of looking at the cheapest option, so.
Yeah, obviously, there's a budget constraint, but I just, and I don't, you know, I've, plastic doesn't tend to, once, like, it gets dirty faster.
I think it's supposed to resemble like a granite. I think the picture's kind of bad there.
I'm sure.
Yeah. I think that's what it's supposed to look like.
Well, anyway, I'll look into it.
Yeah, great.
But yeah, thank you. That was great.
I think durability is going to be a concern because of the use. So I think something above a minimum grade, you know, construction material.
Yeah.
Something above that, I think, would be worth the extra money.
Yeah, and the heat and, I mean, plastic just tends to
Yeah.
Anyway, just a thought.
Agreed.
I think that also satisfies. I know that in the past, we had talked about taking away or replacing the area down right below Tom's office, you know, and putting in, I think, like a gazebo or something like that, something that will attract people. Something as service as small as that, I think, is an attraction, and especially, I think it's important that we provide the better improved mobility access for the park. You can't bring your dog there.
Yeah, I think it's, it's pretty hard if you park up here and they're trying to walk down, you know, so I think it'd be much better to have a, an easier path of travel.
I think it's a great idea.
It's, it's still pretty steep, and we're not going to do anything to address that.
It is pretty steep, yeah.
Yeah.
Did the public have any questions on the Mini Provis Park improvements?
Yep.
Thank you. My name's Barbara Holmes. And I live on California Drive. I may have missed something, but are you, is is the area where the picnic tables are by the creek a part of the park?
No.
No.
We're talking about more up here on the top.
But is that considered part of the park?
I guess you could call it part of the park, yeah.
You haven't been given any, you haven't been giving any consideration to it, kind of cleaning that area up?
We have, it's just not part of this project.
I see.
Yeah, it would be a different project.
All right.
But yeah, there there have been a lot of ideas that we've talked about for making that better. We've talked about a fitness area and
It's kind of scruffy.
A pad for stuff, yeah.
But then I didn't know, because of the water levels, sometimes it may be a problem.
That is a little bit, that's a concern.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
There used to be a bunch of trees down there, and it was a lot more friendly looking, so that's been a part of the conversation.
Yeah.
It was, it was pretty.
We would need a motion to approve the design, but this isn't, what what are we approving? You want direction or?
Yeah, it's really the design. You guys already approved the budget, and I asked Dan to bring this to you guys. I just didn't want it to appear without you guys getting an idea what it was going to look like.
So we would be acknowledging that it would be a concrete path to the bathroom, fix, stabilize the the slope down to the park. And get rid of the broken water fountain and put in a new one.
There is a plaque by that water fountain. I think, well, we're going to keep the plaque. I don't know if you guys know the history of how that fountain was created, but.
I know it hasn't worked in like 15 years. I think the old fountain from in front of the auditorium is at the sewer plant still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If nothing else, I'll hear a motion.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the park design improvements for Mini Provis Park.
Sarah, second?
But before we go into that, did we want to look at other water fountains or just give it, leave it to the discretion?
I think that Susan was going to send Dan some, and assuming that you're willing to look at that
Yeah.
and talk about if it's, you know, if it's not too much more money.
Yeah, exactly. I'll look at other options. I mean, that was just kind of my first
Appreciate it.
stab at it, you know, so.
Yeah.
Could I just speak a minute to the fountain?
Sure.
It's a rotocast granite, and it's pretty durable and hard, and they're about three grand, and to go to a stainless, which would be a comparable item, it would be double the price of six grand or something like that. So the the one you were talking about, you thought was plastic, it's actually more of a granite style.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we're we're actually trying to find contact information for the person with the plaque, so if anybody knows who that is or any information.
I know someone to ask.
Okay.
I'll hook you up with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. I think we had a second? Nope, we had a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, C, the update to the weed nuisance ordinance.
Yeah, so I think tonight this is really to get your feedback. I just got one slide here I was going to share with you guys. So, you know, Derek and I have been talking about this, and Derek looked at some other cities and put this together. I think, you know, this is both a weed and a nuisance ordinance, so I think we should, we should talk about our definitions a little bit. I did talk to Dominic, our fire chief today. You know, he suggested looking at things like brush as well as trees, clearing trees up to a certain level, like 10 feet in addition to weeds. You know, I think the Jackson ordinance requires grass to be mowed between two to four inches. And some of, some of this is what's in our ordinance, and some of it is how we operate. And so I'm not sure it's in the Jackson ordinance, but I have talked to like how they manage it, and you know, they 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 kind of wait, if it goes over like 12 inches, and they start to consider it an issue, right? And they've developed some rules and things for how to manage. And if you guys remember, we did talk about this last year, I think in the fall, and you know, right now, we we have a weed ordinance without much teeth to it. The goal here would still be to encourage people to comply. It's it's not to go out and issue a lot of fines. And as we talked about, we don't have the budget to go out and clean people's yards either. So even with the passage of this ordinance, we will create some, some budgeted fund, and we will probably operate on a complete basis and for the worst offenders up into the amount of money that we have allocated. That money will be paid back, but it will go into the property tax lien, and it will take, it'll take us about a year to get it back. So, you know, don't expect us to go out and and enforce this 100% in the first year. It's just, we can't afford to do that. Couple other comments. You know, I think in this ordinance, it's fairly strict conditions. Again, talking, talking to Dominic, he is, he's going to share, I guess, how, what they expect on, which is a little bit less onerous. One of these is a zero to five clear space around properties. Some cities require that to be dirt or gravel with nothing there. You know, Dominic's suggesting that we don't, you know, make people pull out their rose bushes and things, as long as they maintain it, take care of it. Insurance companies may come back and say, no, you got to take out, take them out. But that that'll be, you know, on the insurance side. You know, the other one is there was some stuff in there about cultivated grasses and pasture land. I kind of like what Jackson did there, which, which was basically considered not a nuisance. And that the fire chief would determine if there needs to be a fire break around pasture land. This ordinance, the way it was written, I think it actually required, may require the removal of some pasture land. There was some stuff in there about paying the city paying them for the loss of that.
I'm, I'm thinking specifically on that, and I had made some notes here, about the Powderhouse area up on Gopher Flat. The rancheria owns that property and then leases it out for grazing. So is, would that be affected by?
Again, I think
This and having to?
I think this is up for you guys to talk about how you want to see this policy and how rigorous. But I think what the fire district inspects for is that there's a fire break strip around the border of the property, and we probably suggest that. And then, then there's the question of the whole appeal process and how many steps you want, how many days. And again, in Jackson's case, they issue, they they give multiple warnings to try to get people to cooperate. When they finally do issue an enforcement ticket, the person has 10 days to appeal. If they don't contact the city within 10 days, then it's enforceable and they move forward. If they do, they have a hearing. They don't really have an appeal process. Their ordinance says you can go to civil court if you don't agree with the hearing. We we suggested kind of more of an internal city process with an appeal. But again, you got to think about what what the overhead is and how many days it'd take before a problem could be fixed. But again, I think it's something for you guys to talk about. Derek, if you wanted to add?
Sure, I'm happy to take comments. So there's different versions. I understand there's the the Jackson ordinance looks good. This is actually patterned off of the Angeles Camp ordinance. This is actually patterned off of the Angeles Camp ordinance, uh, which I, I was the Angeles Camp city attorney for about five years, several years ago, and worked with the fire department there to do essentially what we're trying to do here. So you go with what you know, but this is not the only template I can bring back. If you like other versions or we can splice together. I think we wanted to get something in front of you to workshop and get your input, but I'm happy to mark this up or bring you something different. Whatever you need.
I would definitely like to see more than one template if possible.
Yeah, and, and I, I would too. I, I sent, I did send Derek and Tom a bunch of thoughts about this just when I got it because I had some time to really look at it. And I don't know what's right or wrong or anything. I liked the idea that finally, you know, having a, you know, a $500 penalty. I mean, you, I mean, there's the teeth that you're looking for. I appreciated that. I appreciate the idea of streamlining the process so we don't have to go through multiple iterations to get this thing done. I understand that, you know, you, you probably wouldn't want to go originally with registered mail and then you got fifteen days to do it. And if you don't do it, you know, you're SOL. I don't think we need to be that tough. But multiple iterations, I think, is a mistake for all the reasons Tom, you mentioned, including overhead from the city. But just, you know, like getting it cleaned up and consolidated. The issues on pasture land and that kind of thing, I think, you know, what, what Dominic was talking about, you know, just some kind of perimeter is a, a safe way to go. You don't want to get into people's business and, and we don't have the money to go out there and cut it up.
Which they have done. I know in the past that they put in a, unplowed a scare behind the homes.
Yeah, it can be, it can be done. It's, it's a reasonable thing to do.
We, we cut a fire break on property that we own and it takes some of the, obviously the fire break is no longer grazable, but we don't expect compensation for it. I would want to, want to even consider that, to be honest.
Right.
Yeah, I think the more specific you guys can be. I'm not sure what circumstances are that we're, you would take, would require to compensate for someone creating a safe, uh, fire break. Just my personal.
Yeah, no, this is good. I think the more specific you can be, the, the better the feedback for us. I, I would say, uh, Jackson's administrative penalty is a hundred dollars. I don't know if you guys think 500 is too high or... And the goal here is to get people to comply, not to...
Right. There's a lot at risk, so I don't think 500 is too much. Um, there's a lot at risk.
And at that point, before the 500, it's been posted by the fire department a couple times before they get the registered mail, right? And then there's a appeal possibility. I think it's perfectly fair. I wouldn't want to add too many more steps, um, especially because, you know, we're not gonna... Only some of them will be enforced upon each season. And instead of just going on a complaint basis, I think we should also consider danger to the community.
Yeah, and with the hundred, I mean, it costs more to weed whack your property than a hundred dollars, so I think 500 makes sense.
So to be clear, just so there's no surprises, we would have the ability to issue an administrative fine. If, if the person still doesn't comply, we would hire a private firm to go in and clean up the property. And that plus an administrative overhead fee would be added to the property roll. And, um, Jackson had a hard time finding private companies and ones they found were expensive. So, uh, people were upset, but now once the city started enforcing it, they've got much better compliance. And I own one through the same thing about ten years ago. They've been doing it for a lot longer. Uh, but it's not just the fine, it would, um, could, could cost quite a bit depending how big the property was.
I, I think people will be responsive, you know, once they see the fine is pale. It ironically, at the last Porta Supervisors meeting, they also have a system within the county. And, uh, there were only three, um, properties that hadn't complied with all the steps that were gonna be turned over to, um, the tax and, you know, leaned against the tax, the property tax on the bill. So three out of the whole county, um, for this last year. I, I think people are responsive if they know, oh, I, I better take care of this. So I don't believe 500 is too much. My only concern is you're going to be the enforcement officer, um, on this. Is that by title only?
Somebody I appoint.
That you could appoint, yeah. I just didn't want, with everything else that we're in the middle of, it just didn't seem right that you would be the bottom.
I don't want to make an assumption, but, um, before it came to the point that we, we did the work and we're billing them, I would, I am making an assumption. If we hear back from the folks and they're making an effort, you know, and, and something's happening and there's progress made, that, those probably wouldn't be the properties that we'd go in and clean and place a lien. It would be more property owners that were getting no response from, probably out of town property owners that...
Yeah, I think, I think that's right, but I think there will be a timeline so that you can't just string, string the city along.
Yeah, and because it's a fire danger issue and not just like, hey, we want you to do this, the timing would, so I think...
I think right now is perfect timing.
Yeah, and it should be specific, like this is the day that it needs to be done by and by how many days and whatnot.
You need a date, specific deadline, otherwise it's not gonna happen.
Correct.
And Tom, you mentioned, uh, the fire chief earlier in the fire district. Was that their first, his first comments on this?
Uh, yeah, so we're actually gonna be talking some more.
I think that they need more involvement in, in drafting this because they're the ones that are, are, are posting and actually have more expertise in fuel mitigate, fire fuel mitigation than anybody on our staff.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, they are posting. I think, I think again, they are not being as strict as many cities are in terms of actual weed mitigation.
And they, they lack the enforcement mechanism that we need to provide.
Right. And again, I think we talked about this last year. If, if somebody needs help, I think Dominic and I are both, you know, willing to try to help find resources. If somebody, you know, just physically unable to take care of their property, that, that's, that's not who we're trying to go after. I think a lot of these are absentee owners. And again, part of the process, I think we look up the address in the, uh, in our, um, real estate system and we're gonna send it to their, that's the address on record. And if people don't respond, you know, that's, that's all we can do, really.
So in, in that vein, Derek, if someone, if you send a letter and, uh, you have no proof of service, is there any legal issues about proceeding with, um, doing, doing the work and then putting the lien on? Can, can you, can we end up stubbing our toe and not getting paid because of a technicality like no proof of service?
Um, yeah, we would, we would definitely want to, um, address, I mean, we, we, we would want to keep a proof of service.
Because this, the, the ordinance, the draft ordinance that we got here tonight, it says, uh... I'm sorry, I got it right here. Had it. Oh, it says, uh, "Failure of any owner or any party concerned to receive a notice shall not, shall not affect the validity of any proceeding taken if the procedure for service of notice has been followed."
Correct.
So that sounds like you could go forward without a proof of service.
Well, we would, we would mail, we would do other things. So if someone just decides they see something, city of Sutter Creek, don't open it, throw it in the trash.
Right, that's...
We've, and there's court cases that talk about that.
Okay, that's, that's where I wondered. Are, are we, are we gonna be okay there?
Yeah, someone sticks their head in the sand and, and sees something from the city and they just pretend, uh, you know...
It's like throwing your jury, jury do not notice away.
Exactly, yeah.
I never got it and say I never got it.
You can't, yeah, you can't say that. That's, but, but we have to follow the process. We begin to show up and like mow their lawn.
But, but certified mail?
Yeah, we would, we'd usually do a certified mail.
But not, not at, at the first, right? I mean, I mean, let's get, let's talk about that for a minute. So there's a first notification that you have fifteen days. That's not certified?
No, that is. So again, the ordinance is picking up at the point where warnings and everything have failed. So we would be issuing, we would be mailing that official notice that...
Okay.
You've, you've had like things posted on your property three times by the fire department. There's been no change.
Then this needs really to be cleaned up to clarify that because that's not clear. That, right from the, it doesn't say certified mail in the first paragraph of delivery.
Okay.
It just doesn't say that. So if that's our intent, we just need to get really clear about that. It's fine with me and it makes sense. I support it. But let's get this cleaned up. And then the other thing I just want to bring up again, and I think Tom, you mentioned this. You're talking about, at some point, the city hiring someone or taking on the job to go do this work. And we're going to budget X dollars a year to be able to do that. And we're gonna do that work up till that amount, not beyond, right?
Right.
So do we need to, we've talked about 20,000 bucks. Do we, is that something we need to contemplate tonight and give you direction on?
I don't think so. I think again, we, we need to bring back an ordinance for first reading and the second reading.
Fair enough.
And then we're probably gonna be into the next budget year, so...
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are there issues legally with acts, like going on people's land without their response?
You'd have to get what's called an abatement warrant. So we'd actually have to go to court, get, there's an administrative process we go through, so we'd have to take care of that. We can't just walk onto someone's property and, you know, mow, you know, weed whack and...
That's not what this ordinance says.
Well, we, we, but I mean, that's a process that would be added on top of this, that, that's a, that's a legal... Once we gain entry, that's, that's something we have to do.
Right. So there's the operational process. It's not spelled out a hundred percent in, in the ordinance.
Well, and I, that's clear in the staff report. It says that, um, the police and fire department, where are we here? Are discussing, staffs discussing with the police and fire department the operational details of this. They just need an ordinance to hold people to comply too. That's our part of this.
Not all of the process would, I mean, necessarily be in the ordinance. The ordinance would set out the legal, minimum legal requirements and the basics. But, you know, like how you actually go about doing it would...
We gotta put some teeth into it and then you guys will figure out how the work is done.
Thank you.
And then will the court notify them as well?
Yeah, I see it.
No, uh, the, the abatement is a, is a, what we call an ex parte process. So they've been given their notice, they've refused, so we go to court. Court will look like a, I mean, it's an administrative abatement warrant, looks at the papers and says, go ahead and do it. Issues an abatement warrant, we take that and we do the work.
Okay. It's, it's this pretty streamlined process. That's, that's what I was worried about.
It's an easy process.
If we could simplify that so it's clear for us to be able to communicate to, clear to others.
We, we will be able to communicate that, for sure.
You have enough feedback tonight to get started?
I think you have members of the public.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Counsel, are you good for now? Go ahead, Charles.
Thank you. I think it's important that you put in place what you've discussed tonight. But further from that, um, as far as a year ago, I spoke with Dominic. And at that point in time, his idea was to mitigate these, uh, issues with, uh, fire hazards on a year-round basis. It's obvious if you drive around town that there are some people that just do not comply and it becomes more of an educational issue. So I think that's something that would be well worth focusing in on because you can take care of the snake before it bites you. You know, cause like you've discussed here, there's a lot of ramifications going through all this other stuff. But if you take care of it ahead of time and some education, these people know that you're serious, then I don't even think it would get to that point where they have a fire issue or you have to go after them and try and collect fees and go through all that other rigmarole because it's very timely and it's dollar-consuming and it, and it absorbs...
Yeah, that's really the last thing you want to do, is to have to get to that point.
Exactly. It, it consumes a lot of hours. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. I, I think you're right. We just need to have something in place though to reference back.
Barbara Combs again. It isn't clear to me, maybe you understand how, um, how you will recoup the cost and the fines that might be imposed on these people short of a lien, which may not be much, you know, incentive. And then the other question I have has to do with jurisdiction over a couple of pieces of property. The school down by, um, Spanish and Sutter I own, that corner is a mess of, you know, dried up, dead trees, limbs, gra, uh, grass, leaves, all kinds of stuff. Um, I don't know if you have any jurisdiction over that property given it's school. And also at the top of, um, uh, California Drive, Erickson Ranch is there. And some of the houses are but the ranch lands and the grass comes right up to their fence line. And, um, that fence line isn't that far from some of the houses. I just wondered if you had any jurisdiction on that land too, to do anything.
What? Yeah, Erickson Ranch, Erickson Ranch.
Yeah, that's a, that's probably a good question. So suppose a, uh, and, and they, this is, I'm not asking, expecting an answer immediately. If a, uh, someone's backyard backs up to the, uh, city limit and the fire hazard is on the other side that outside the city, can we, um... We have any mechanism or means to create a fire break between the, outside the city limits?
Cause Erickson Ranch isn't in the city limits.
I'm sorry, you're...
So this is, I, I mean, we're getting on specifics here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but...
Okay, yeah, I know.
So, but for instance, though, right?
If the backyard backs up to the, to the city limit and now on the other side is, is it, there's a cattle fence and then grazing land. And they really should, so you've got a fire hazard, but the land is, is not inside the city limits. You got, then you gotta work with the county or I guess, maybe, I don't know.
What he's talking about specifically, Derek, too, is, you know, it is the, the bypass mitigation property. Remember that we went through years ago? That's Erickson Ranch. So it's not part of the city, but that whole neighborhood goes right up to it.
Well, I mean, if it's, if this, if, it's their law, but if their, it's their property is on city property, even though it backs up to county property or non-city property, it's still a public issue and it's still within our jurisdiction.
Which part of county land?
If it's, if it's their, if they're backing up to county land, but it's, it's, it's their property line is the...
City limit.
City limit, we can enforce in their backyard.
Sure.
But we can't go in their backyard.
Even though, even though it's protecting county property because it's still a fire hazard that could...
It's the other way around. They want the county property to protect the city.
We can enforce on the county though.
No, 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 no.
Does that answer your question?
No.
That's not in the city, so...
You would have to do your backyard along the fence line, create a, in, in your own yard, create a barrier.
But, but we may be able to work with the county agency or, to do that. Brian Combs, California Drive up in, up on the Erickson Ranch area. The neighbors up there every year go crazy because there's this giant weed wall up against their backyards. I think they've been trying to work with the land conservancy to get a fire break there. And I think they're dragging their feet, the conservancy allowing that to happen. I think they've said, well, we can put some cows up there, but the cows don't create a fire break. They could probably drop more combustible stuff and they eat up. But, um, the, so I, that's, that's an interesting issue because, uh, the best thing to do with that would be to drag a twelve-foot bulldozer along the fence line. That'd be a done end of it. But how do you get, the city has, has no power to make that happen? Do they have any jurisdiction over the, uh, land conservancy and their fire breaks? That's a, it's a long fire line and it's public access. People walk up there and do what people do, you know? That's why I said I think that would be a situation that would require cooperation between, uh, on their, their part. If we don't have, if we don't have means to enforce it, you can only, you can, you can only, you can only... If we don't have, if we don't have means to enforce it, you can only, you can, you can only, you can only work, do, do what you can with the, uh, uh, your jurisdiction and what powers you have.
Okay, so I, I hear you saying it's not, because if you ask the neighbors up there to dig twelve feet out of their backyard line, I don't think that's gonna happen either, so.
No.
That's something we should probably go to the county with because that is a huge exposure up there.
It is. I mean, the, the fire department does that practice burn up there on the west side of California Drive. And that reduces the risk there a lot, but they don't, they don't do anything.
But not up deeper.
North, uh, north of the fence line, they don't do anything. Just, I mean, it's just, it's, there's probably other spots in the city too, but. And that school district, is, is you have jurisdiction over the school district? Is that Sutter Ione corridor and around Spanish Drive down to the end of the parking lot? Now, this is a huge, we, a huge, uh, fuel load.
We have jurisdiction, the, the school's in the city limits, so we can, we can apply this.
The, the, the fuel load along that line is huge and they don't do anything about it. Just let it sit. Okay, that's my comments. Thank you.
Your, your other question about how do we recoup fees, it, it does go on the property tax roll. And so it would be collected within the property tax payments of the next year.
Okay.
Craig Lambert, Forty Nickerson. So you guys are talking more about like wide open fields and meadows and, you know, oh, big open areas with weeds.
Not really.
It could be, it could just be a seven thousand foot lot next to your house that needs to be.
Right, just a big empty lot.
Anything less, in, in this ordinance, this particular ordinance and, and currently, anything less than an acre requires it to be, uh, all of it removed, not, not just the perimeter, but the whole, the whole property.
So we're not talking residences, residential areas? Cause you were, when they were defining weeds, I mean, I saw shrubs, trees, you even mentioned, um, rose bushes.
Yeah, we are talking about residential.
We are talking about yards, yeah.
Well.
You need to mow your yard too.
Yeah, I mean, if your front lawn got two feet tall of dry grass, then it would be, then that could be subject to being tagged for abatement.
Well, and the fire, it's the same, um, the fire department, lucky you, you must not have gotten a tag. Good on you. But, um, the fire department has forever gone through with their tags annually and, and it's residential. Um, and then there are few larger pieces of property around town. Some of them have been tagged as well.
So if there's something considered combustible that like you have a planting in front of your house or something? I mean, I've seen the insurance companies and what they send out and it looks like a big, flat square. And they want you to have your trees planted far apart and like if you're planting your property, fine. But if you have a hundred year old property that's a deep narrow lot next to another deep narrow lot like Nickerson, all the way up the street.
That's what I was trying to say, we're not, I'm, I'm not necessarily saying we should do what the insurance companies are saying.
Cause you'd have to clear cut the whole street.
Right.
Right.
But again, what the fire department has been issuing warnings are is, um, kind of maintaining your yard, not, not allowing, you know, fallen trees or two feet high grass. So, um, I think most people will be fine, most people are fine. Um, every year we, I think we've given out around thirty warnings or the fire district has.
In all the history to date, they've never required a tree removal or shrubs as far as I know.
Right.
It's all about grass, grass and weeds.
And trimming.
Well.
Yeah, dead.
Something dead, dead, laying down, um, then that would, if it's laying in the lot, then you, and you'd have to clear it, yes. But I mean, they've never required someone to cut down a tree because as far as I know.
It, it's defined in here. It defines nuisances, weed, grass, dead trees, lumber, rubbish, refuse, junk, trash, debris, garbage, waste material.
All right.
So it's not your landscaping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause when you look at from the insurance company, it's like you need to get all, all your landscaping out.
Oh, I had to cut down two trees on, on a house because just because it was overhanging the eve of the house.
Right.
So, but they have, they have a, a hammer. They were gonna cancel my insurance, so.
Yeah.
But.
Well, see, that's what concerned me because you guys were mostly talking about hammers and the size of the hammer. And, uh, and I would say more on, um, citizen education. So if they're, you know, I don't know how you put stuff out there, but I think most people want to, you know, have a safe neighborhood.
I think you're, I agree with you. I think you're correct.
Yeah, cause then, cause then if you got educated and then you flaunted it, then the hammer came, it's like, well, I, I, they told me.
Right, exactly. I agree.
Yeah, that's it, thanks.
And again, every year, there's about thirty notices that a lot of these are, I think absentee landowners where the empty lots completely overgrown, nobody, nobody's taking care of it. So those are the situations we're trying to find. So again, if you guys have any more specific detailed feedback, um, Derek and I will go back and make revisions.
Great. Yeah, just one other comment. You might want to talk with Dominic on dates because I know some years that we got late rain. Like if you weed whacked your whole yard, then all, you have to do it again. So he might have some insight on the dates that work best.
Okay, that takes us to the next item, a conversation on empty storefront ordinance.
Yeah, this item is even more up for discussion. I gave, I gave you guys the sample ordinance from Nevada City. Um, but again, if you look at our downtown district and any retail district, empty, empty places can be really hard on retail. You want to create a sense of place. And, um, you know, this ordinance they passed required, i- if there's an empty building, they require a window display and, and, um, you know, you can't just like paper over the windows or you can't have just a cavernous empty space. And it also requires the property owners to like paint their buildings and keep the appearance up. So I, again, I brought this to you guys just for feedback, to see if you thought this was something you would want to see here. If you had comments or things you'd want to tweak if, if we were gonna move in that direction.
I have, I have one question and, and clarification on, it's on the page five or page fifty-four. Vacant storefront buildings and updated window displays. It said, except in as far as windows are painted or otherwise covered with displayed, windows shall be cleaned and maintained. And then in the next section, owner shall submit pictures in this showing updated window displays. So my question is, and this was brought, brought up to me as well. Can a vacant store owner just blackout, just paint the windows? There's nothing.
It says no.
Yeah, I know.
If there's.
Previous location.
Right, it does say no, but then the next sentence is, it's a little ambiguous. So if and when we get to this, we just want to make sure it's, once again, it's clear and not ambiguous.
Is, is this, uh, topic been brought up at the, uh, business association meetings? I think it should, I think it should be.
Yes.
This is really the beginning and if you guys say, no, let's not touch this, then it'll stop here. If you do think, I, I agree, it needs to be a lot of outreach.
I had.
But again, this would be mostly the property owner, not the businesses. Right, it would be an empty building.
Right.
I had four people, um, who were the people that get the emails and read the agendas, um, reach out to me this week and say they thought this was a great idea. But I do think it needs to go, you know? Yeah, well, it's not the business association that has vacant storefronts. So, you know, that might not be the, but it's their environment.
No, but I, I just think it's a courtesy that needs to be extended.
Sure, yeah. I agree with you, Jim.
Um, I had a couple of just high level things. I, I'm, I'm not, I think this is worth kicking around, but I think there's a lot to do from here on. Somewhere in here, page four, for vacant storefront buildings, a picture of each, no, oh, okay. Where they register the vacant building, sort of, you know, for lack of a better word. Can we, um, ask to be included in that, any applicable listing, um, where the building's for rent or for sale? I know, uh, sometimes it's very difficult to find out with some of our empty buildings. And we've made some effort to see if we can unvacate those. That would be helpful to know. And then I guess my other concern was if we're requiring to paint their buildings and keep it up. If we're talking about Main Street, you know, that's no small feat. People who have very, um, vibrant businesses still aren't able to get up there and paint those old buildings and fix the banisters and, you know, it's not an easy thing. So that might be difficult to enforce. But something, certainly the windows and the plants and keeping in communication with the city, uh, I think would be very positive. And then I also couldn't remember, in lieu of parking fees, that goes with a business license, right?
So I'm sorry, said again.
Are in lieu of parking fees, that, so there's no license on these empty buildings? So we're not collecting anything from them at this point to, you know, help maintain Main Street as much as we do.
In, in here, it mentions a, a monitoring fee. Um, owner of a vacant building shall cause it to be inspected at least weekly for compliance with the maintenance standards of this chapter. So my question would be, it would be inspected by whom? And then it's followed up with upon payment of the monitoring fee provided that it's chapter. So if someone has an empty building, do they have to pay for it to be monitored? As you were leading and kind of referring to, I believe?
Um, I, I didn't read this for the details because I don't, this, this isn't our draft ordinance.
No.
Yeah, I think it was just the idea of if this is a, a direction we want to go and I would like to look into it. I guess what I was trying to say is I think that one of the positives that would come out of this, besides window displays and a little sprucing up, is there would be correspondence between at least the city and the property owners. And I think even our last conversation, when we were talking about nuisance abatement, you know, just having a line of conversation with especially some of our, um, out of town, what do we call, not vacant property owners or remote property owners? You know, will help alleviate some of these issues.
I agree.
I think, um, just weighing in, in, in general terms, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea for Sutter Creek. I mean, obviously we're historic downtown. It matters what the buildings look like. It matters if they're empty for year after year. It, it really does matter. So I appreciate the, the energy moving down this road. I think doing it thoughtfully, engaging people. But, um, I, I absolutely think something like this ought to be done and would support moving forward.
So certainly going to the business association, talking to them about it. Uh, but again, I think property owner maintains their building, they'll, they'll like it. And if they don't, they won't like it.
Of course.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, and, you know, pick your battles and all that stuff. But, you know, we're a struggling little city and one of the struggles we have are a lot of vacancies. And, you know, sometimes the buildings aren't looking so sharp. It, it, and again, it, it matters when people come to this town. They really appreciate the vibrancy and the beauty of it. And as that starts to decline, so will our town. And I think that we should do everything within our power to try to hold that up. You know, without absolutely infringing on, you know, property rights and all that kind of business. I appreciate property rights, but at the same time, you're downtown historic Sutter Creek and it matters.
I think another group to talk to besides the business association might be some of the realtors. Seems much more in their realm.
Sure, yeah. Just some outreach.
A lot of them do property management too for commercial.
Right.
Yeah.
Did anyone in the public want to comment on this item?
Craig Lambert, um, Forty Nickerson. So historic towns, they do have, um, um, an ordinance and you can design it as, you know, detailed or as gentle as you want. But that the businesses would need to keep up their appearance. You could, you know, some minimum, minimal level, because you're right. If the, if the town is looking sad and run down and if the property owner is far away and all they care about is that they get the rent check every month and they don't care what it looks like. There needs to be a way to have them put some pride in their, in their building. I mean, paint is not that expensive, you know? And maybe they need to do more than paint, but the minimum would be, you know, paint and that it looks presentable. Cause I'm very proud of our little town. And, um, and I think the more the businesses look good, people that, visitors that come, they want to come back. And I think that benefits all the businesses and it just, it's positive energy and it's a positive loop. And the, the opposite is true too. If it's starting to look like, you know, you see an empty storefront and this building is needing paint badly. You know, it cycles things in that direction too. So I'm just surprised that there isn't a minimum standard that needs to be kept up. That's all.
It is kind of interesting because we have very strict and specific design standards on our Main Street. To, to do anything in the historic Main Street, it's very specific. We have a whole committee that goes over it. But we don't have anything on the books to not do something on Main Street. So that's what this would be creating. And, and there, um, you mentioned that towns have it, I'm, a lot of them do. At this point, we don't, but that's what we're discussing adding. Just a quick thought, maybe you could play on that jewel of the mother lode theme. Do you have what you need from us, Tom?
I guess the, uh, last thing would be like, where does this rank on in terms of priorities for you guys? It's good like background project, but.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yes, that's my opinion.
Would it be helpful to staff or worth it to, um, I don't think we can do it tonight because it's not agendized, is that? But, um, appoint some of us on an ad hoc basis to.
I, I don't think so. I think it's mostly legal work and again, it's, doesn't seem super urgent, but I guess I think it's important. So we'll, we'll work on it and just bring it back.
I think it's a direction we'd all like to go.
I think especially just on the edge of coming up to a busy, um, you know, our busy summer season. It would be nice to see some, some, some minimum, at least start in place.
I would definitely put it below the, uh, fire fuel mitigation issues.
Yeah, for sure. And I remember hearing something about Elk Grove did something like this and they actually were able to find grant money to help fix up the downtown. Cause like some of those old buildings that are in need of paint, it actually could be a huge bill to get it to that. And they are starting to look kind of tatty.
I think, um, I, I hear that we don't want to drop everything and get this done right now. And at the same time, it concerns me to just have it so wide open. I wonder if the council would be willing to weigh in on, well, by what time? By what month, in how many months, in how many years, in how many days, would you like to see a draft? I mean, what are you guys thinking? Because I wouldn't be comfortable waiting a year.
Sure. But rather than you guys do that, why don't, why don't I come back next meeting? I'll just give you an update.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you're not.
It feels like it may be, you know, six months or something. It's not gonna happen next month. And again, you want to do outreach and so.
Right.
It's gonna take a little while.
We can start the outreach now, you know? It, it was like enforcement night. I think that, you know, as long as everybody continues to talk about the fact that we're going to be able to enforce on some of our weed abatement and we're discussing.
I do see some activities, seems like a couple of buildings that have been empty, may, may not be empty much longer, which would also maybe impact.
Do we have any, um, language in our, um, this guidelines for our historical section of town? That we could kind of springboard at least to get started, maybe before we put through a formal ordinance? That we maybe already have some language, we just need to enforce that?
No, most of it's for construction, right? So an existing building, you're not required to, you know, construct something on it, right?
Okay.
And again, generally.
I was just hoping there was some language that we could start pulling out and then. I was just hoping there was some language that we could start pulling out and then lean in on that first.
And then I'm kind of confused how we would require window displays because not everyone's artistic, like not everyone can make it. Like, what are we asking for?
A lot of cities do this. You you have a display in the window, even if the building is empty. And a built that display may not change. You don't, you're not forced to rent your space. It just has to look good.
But what kind of display? Because it could backfire and then we have like this weird stall.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, it says in particular here, a display may be presented in two or three dimensions and may include artwork, window paintings and other items that serve to screen a vacant building's interior from the view. I'm not sure how you accomplish that.
Yeah, I think it could really be dicey.
A picture in the window that that blocks it because you put a put a little display inside there, you can still look right past the display and into the vacant building. So I'm not sure how that works.
You'd have to curtain it off. You'd have to build something, yeah.
I see another member of the public.
Call me public or staff or whatever you want to call me. It's fine. Just just an idea. I hear Susan's point about, you know, some people might not lean into the artistic side as much as some others. We do have a design review board that, you know, for activities happening downtown for paint or updates to a building, that goes to them for approval before it's done. I mean, that could be a function of them. If there's a vacant building and the property owner has to put up a display, they review the display and say if it's good or bad or if what they want to look different. It's just an idea. They exist. They exist for that capacity now in a in a in a certain way. I mean.
Or even to make it more fun, maybe we could get the Arts Council involved in the high school and then it could be a boon. Instead of just like, I just am thinking now of like Dave Pyer, like his window displaying, you know.
I personally wouldn't want to see window displays having to go through design review.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
I think that would be an extra hoop.
But maybe having some sort of process to help people along the way.
I mean, that would be a big barrier, I guess.
Well, and then it could be like really get a course of like, whoa, so and so doesn't make good window displays. I think we're getting not the opposite of high detail here. Yeah. I think actually if the intent is to try to make these buildings not vacant, you wouldn't want to screen off. I mean, the inside of some of these buildings is super cool and I think people seeing in the window the woodwork and the molding and the, you know, some of what's inside them would actually, I'd rather see that if it's cleaned up than, you know, a bunch of rubber plants. Charles?
Is it like painted painted windows? Painted windows? I know, but is it glass? The inside, okay, you're painted windows, okay. Well, storefront doesn't necessarily mean windows. It could be bricks or something. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Well, that wouldn't pass design and review. We already have that, yeah.
So Claire, to your point, I think we are in a bunch of detail here that isn't what we need to be doing tonight. But it's important because just in this conversation, I'm thinking about your comment a minute ago. You know, we could start outreach now. I'm not sure we start any outreach now. There's a lot of unanswered questions. I'm not sure. We just don't want to cool our jets for a minute, let Tom and the staff work on some things before we start talking about something. We're not quite sure what it's going to be yet. It makes people nervous, potentially. Just throwing that out there.
I think it's a good point.
Yeah, and I would suggest if you guys go to other towns. Yeah, that would be a closed business. That'll be an enclosed window. It may show some products, but there's no business there. It's just a window display. So.
Okay, go to Union Square.
Yeah, the Palladium.
They're all closed, but they have displays in the window.
Okay, are we good?
Thank you.
Mayor and council member reports. Dan.
I'm okay, thank you.
Julia.
Yes, let me find my notes.
Okay, we'll skip you for now while you look. Jim?
No, but I'm glad I appreciate the how the furniture was rearranged and I like it. I think it's an improvement.
Susan?
I'd maybe like to see the chairs more parallel with the back wall so they're did, what do you guys think? You're you're okay? You can see, you feel, okay? You're connected a little bit. All right, great. That's what I want to hear. Thank you.
Susan?
No.
Julia?
Yes. Two two reports. One, we had a lengthy ACRA meeting. One is the Nexus Fees Project for the Bryson Park was accepted. So that will be moved forward using the old Nexus Fees. That'll be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors. And they're talking about a proposed partnership with Calafaris County, who currently does not have a recreation agency. And there there's a lot of questions about that. Probably the other major things for ACRA. They're proposing or Mr. Rock is proposing dropping the PAC cap program after June thirtieth because it's losing significant more money than bringing in. So it's become a bit of a financial drain. We're still waiting for our audit report. And there's just the lingering concern that our our budget and several categories of increase in our budget is really tight. They're looking to develop the enrichment programs. Mr. Rock was here before. So the big thing was that our project for Bryson Park was accepted and will be moving forward. The other meeting is the Board of Supervisors meeting last week. And there was a lengthy discussion on short term rentals in the county properties, not the city. So they're investigating and this went on, discussion went on for over an hour and a half on the possibility of the county limiting short term rentals for availability for sales. So it became availability versus affordability as far as real estate and that was not there was no resolution or conclusion. And then the big the big drop is the county right now is looking at a three million dollar shortfall in their general fund budget. So they're not going to be able to, three million.
Thank you.
So they're looking to scrimp save. They aren't talking cuts yet, but it's it's not pretty. So that's it.
Does the county have, maybe someone can answer this, maybe not, does the county have enterprise funds like we do? Would that be like the Sheriff's Department and the, it's just utility type things? Because the county doesn't do the water agency and the county doesn't do any sewer.
They have all kinds of social services, though, that that bring in federal and state.
Those are enterprise funds?
Well, I wouldn't describe as enterprise funds, but they're deep, they're restricted. But I mean, if they provide any like utilities, they would have those and then they take in revenue. Okay.
Okay. So I I'm just trying to figure out what the, is the three million dollars a shortfall and just a piece of their budget then or all of their budget?
That'd be their general fund.
It would be the general.
That'd be a structural budget or structured deficit.
A city attorney's report.
I have no report.
Future agenda items. We gave them a bunch already, I think. I have a couple. Okay. Um, I will get a rough draft of the tree ordinance that I've been working on. And then I also would like to discuss a dark skies sort of ordinance for further developments to contain light pollution. There's just different sorts of lighting you can require so that, because if we do put as many homes as we're thinking about up on that hill, it'll, you know, add a lot of light pollution. I think that would be to our detriment. And there's easy ways around. Are you working on a tree ordinance, Susan? Or I thought we were going to try to get some people together and plant a couple of trees. Um, yeah, I'm working on that and I'm also working on an ordinance to protect the current trees. Anybody else?
I have I have one and I don't know it's here. I probably should talk to Tom or Dan. You know, it really struck me when you were talking about there was, there is a plaque by the water fountain. Nobody knows what it is. So I started thinking plaques. The Sutter Creek big plaque that's up by our sign and by the Daffodil Center up in the kind of vacant side of the hill. Is there been any discussion on relocating that so it can be actually seen and visited? People can't really access that from the parking lot because of the traffic. And I think it's important enough that we look at maybe moving that rock plaque, the Sutter Creek rock plaque to someplace that's more visible and a center part of foot traffic.
Are you talking about the book sign?
Yeah.
The book sign?
The book?
The book sign by the book sign? The John Sutter.
You say a rock.
At the Campbell's property, not at the gateway, right?
Yeah, just down by Campbell's property.
The monument, that's been about a year old, that monument.
It was just put there.
Okay.
Yeah, and the the book sign, the the foundation just had redone.
No, the sign I think is good. I think.
Which one are you talking about? Is it in Miners' Bed?
No, it's across the street, across the highway or.
It's by the book sign.
Oh.
And that was placed there by the Native Sons of the Golden West and it's on, I believe it's on Jeff Campbell's property, so.
It is on Jeff's property because when we we had to remember, we took the book sign down for like a year and a half to paint it and then put it back up.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, what's the request?
The the rock with the plaque, the Sutter Creek, be put in a in a better foot traffic area where it can actually be appreciated.
Sons and Jeff Campbell, it sounds like.
Would that?
I'll talk to Jeff.
Okay.
I'll ask Jeff about it.
Well, this. So who owns actually the the rock or the the plaque on there then?
Jeff Campbell provided the rock and the placement of it and the Native Sons purchased the plaque.
Okay. I just think it would be appreciated more in a more visible, walkable.
Yeah, you got to get out of your car and walk up there and look at it.
Well, yeah, and there's parking for what, three there in that pullout?
Right.
So I just think it's significant enough for other people to appreciate.
You had a lot of information reports. I think we covered a lot of it, but if you.
Any questions on any of the information correspondence?
I don't have any questions.
I just have one, I think, positive comment on regarding the city treasurer's report. It always on the bottom on page fifty six of our packet, it always gives the total number, a recap of city treasury. And then compares it to a total the last month. And and those are just two figures I kind of keep track of and kind of follow. And it seems over since November, the difference between our year ago has gone almost by fifty percent has been reduced, which I think is a good sign. Instead of having significantly less money than a year ago, we just have a little less money. So I think kudos to our staff, Mason. Where I think minding our Ps and Qs and and bringing us and keeping us in financial health. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Happy Saint Patrick's Day.
You were green.